I'll just pause to make sure Nathan has the National Anthem ready. So, I will ask everyone to stand for the singing of our National Anthem, but I ask you not to sing.[14.46][14.46][laughter]
All right, well, I'm sure we'll get those technical difficulties looked after for next meeting.
Nathan, I will tell you that there was a young lady, a schoolgirl, that sang in Ottawa in Remembrance Day that was outstanding by herself.
Yeah, we've got about six or eight different versions from various...
Well, that wasn't his version.
And the back battling.
Keep digging, Tom, keep digging. All right, he's a senior, sometimes he gets disoriented. All right, so additions to the agenda, in addition to the agenda, I would like to add 6.5. We'll just, it will be a closed session, and so hopefully I can find the closed session. Before we get there, it'll just be called CAO. If Administration could just help me out with the FOIP section for that before we get there, that would be appreciated. All right, so adoption of the agendas, there are a member of council that I'd like to make a motion, Councilor Peebles, all in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Nancy. Corrections or amendments, October 28th, 2020, regular meeting of council minutes, any corrections or amendments? October 28th, 2020, organizational meeting of council minutes, any corrections or amendments? The adoption of October 28th, 2020, regular meeting of council minutes, someone would like to make a motion to adopt that, Councilor Ballas, all in favor?
In favor.
Thank you. And 4.2, the adoption of October 28th, 2020, organizational meeting of council minutes, is your Councilor McGee, all in favor?
In favor.
Thank you. So, that moves us on to our delegations, 5.1, where we have Acting Staff Sergeant Erin Matthews of the Drayton Valley RCMP here to present the statistics. The podium is all yours, and it should be live.
No, no, no. Yeah, we were kind of just thrown into that one, let me tell you. We showed up, and it was like, oh, you guys want to sing "Oh, Canada"? No. Oh, well, but we need you to. Okay. What can I say? Except for it was butchered. Anyways, yeah, so with regards to October 2020, again, I'm not really going to go over the, unless you want me to, the January to October, because, yeah. So, when we look at October 2020, you will notice that, again, we have the homicide offenses related to death, looks like it was four, we did not have four. Those are all Crime Stoppers tips that were received pertaining to that, and we're trying to get around the way that this is supposed to be scored properly so that it doesn't show up and create panic when it comes down to that being seen. When it comes down to, we had a, one sexual assault that was reported, it resulted in charges for the indecent act, sexual assault, and forcible confinement. Assaults, we had an aggravated assault that resulted in charges being laid, it was an assault that occurred at the 7/11. One intoxicated individual threw something at somebody's vehicle, and somebody didn't like that, so they decided to take him out with a pipe. So, yeah, we had assault with a weapon, again, one suspect used bear mace. Actually, that one was just arrested yesterday for that particular incident, so that one has been taken care of. A lot of them were regular assaults that were just between unhappy client grabbed somebody by the arms, shoved somebody in a hallway, no charges really have been laid in those. There was one that was domestic-related, in which charges were laid, along with an unlawfully inner residence failed to comply with conditions and failed to comply with probation order. Break-in enters, we've had one that was an attempted to a resident, the known individual was known to the occupant, and charges were laid as, with regards to that. The rest of them, we had a break-in to a C can, air compressor and tools were stolen, I think that was at Frank Matic High School, the lock had been cut off, and another break-in entered to a business where nothing had been taken. Thefts of motor vehicles, we really had two that were stolen, one has been, was recovered in Peace River, one was not yet recovered, and one was an attempt. Those have gone down quite a bit, because we happen to have them all in the remand center right now. Thefts unders, again, people are keeping their vehicles unlocked, keeping valuables in their vehicles, so, and I think that, again, like I said last month, I believe that the increase in possible thefts of vehicles will go up, because people are warming up their vehicles again, and so, that usually causes a little bit of issues. Mischiefs to property, we had some youth set fire to the Rubber Mat at St. Anthony's Playground, that's been dealt with informally between the parents, the youth, and the school, so. We've had a couple of reports of one of our homeless male, which is well-known to us, hiding in the ceiling of the provincial building. Female locking over garbage cans and cutting the hedges, we talked to her, she said she was trimming the hedges for the people, we told her not to, she stopped. Trying to clean it up, I guess. Right now, again, we're dealing with a lot of, like, some of our homeless people that are in the vestibules of the banks, the post office, and that sort of thing, we've been escorting them and taking them to the MAT program, especially when it's at night, so we just give them a courtesy ride to the MAT program. Yesterday, we had a robbery, or it was an assault and a theft of a cellphone, and it resulted in a search warrant being executed at one of the trailers at Centre Court, and once we were looking for the cellphone, we also found some drugs. So, we backed out and got another search warrant, and we went back, and we were able to seize some fentanyl, some meth, and some cocaine, approximate street value of $10,000. One male has been charged with three counts of possession for the purpose of trafficking, and he is presently being held for a bail hearing. And that same male and two females were charged with the robbery and theft of the cellphone. And then last night, we had a suspicious semi reported. At the end of it all, the semi had been reported stolen out of Red Deer yesterday, it was involved in a break-in enter in the Evansburg area, in which a bunch of firearms were stolen, and a bunch of other things. We located the vehicle in a ditch, just by 39 and 22 there, and we called the Police Dog Services to help us out, because there was nobody in the vehicle, and we arrested two males on that one, and right now, the vehicle is being searched for a lot of the stolen property, and they're also held for a hearing, so. With regards to the whole mental health thing that we're trying to get going here, I have a meeting set up this week, it's a teleconference, with regards to, so, the individual is going to be the, is on with the Police Board for the Mental Health, so she is, is going to be helping us out, and she's on the Mental Health Advisory Committee, and she's also going to reach out to some of her health, Alberta Health colleagues, and we're going to have a teleconference to discuss how we move forward from this. I've also been in touch with our FCSS, Lola, and so we're kind of working together to see how we can get this to come to some kind of fruition, so hopefully, but the wheels of justice and the wheels of government tend to move slowly, so, but we're, we're working on it as best as we can, so.
Have you spoken to Cindy at Primary Care Network? Because I had a conversation with her, and she had interest in, in the program.
She was in a meeting, a teleconference meeting that I was in last week, and I haven't talked to Cindy just yet, but I can reach out to definitely, because she is part and parcel of this whole big group, right? So, yeah, I will touch base with Cindy, yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm asking about the events coming, so if you're excited to hear that we have a meeting coming up with the Mental Health Police Advisory Committee and other health services, I think that this is, I think that's in the right direction, I know that it's been a long...
Definitely.
So, we had a, I think, a good meeting with K Division, and the Mental Health thing came up, and I think it was well-received, I think they're working hard on trying to figure it out as well, so, I take your point that, that they're, I think where it, where it gets a little bit more troublesome is, as they termed it, is rural Alberta, right? So, we're in rural Alberta, as much as people think that we're in, we're not, we are in rural Alberta, and that's the...
And that makes it, that is, makes it a little bit more difficult to get this type of a thing going, but there are several other areas in rural Alberta that are trying to, you know, get this, get this working as well, so.
Yeah, this is hardly unique for, for Drayton Valley, and so, the question I have, though, is, is around the drug enforcement, and so we've had this, this time of cannabis legalization, when I see, and I'll go to the January, October, but I see 35 incidents of drug enforcement, I'm guessing it's not cannabis, it must be the next, the next levels, right?
Yeah, it would be the, the methamphetamine, the majority, the ones that we deal with the most are the methamphetamines, a little bit of fentanyl, and as we were able to take some of that off the streets yesterday, which is good, but, yeah.
And the, the folks that you took into custody yesterday are, are they known folks?
Yes.
Just finally we were able to catch them with something and move forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
And the one that was also taken into custody yesterday, who's been charged with the counts of trafficking, is also one of the individuals that was charged with the assault with a weapon, the, using the bear spray, so.
Councilor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I check this report, one other interest in development, I see Sergeant Matthews, is that Staff Sergeant Matthews, the false alarms has gone down to minus 69 percent, so, is that the, the way I believe that the handling of false alarm or the alarms have been changed?
Yes, yeah, so that has resulted in a decrease in the number of alarms that were given.
Okay, I would, have you encountered anything that, you know, there's actual incident, but there has been a delay because of that?
No.
Okay.
Actually, none of the, none of the alarms that have gone off, that we've responded to, have all been false, and have been, resulted in...
Thank you. Thank you very much. If you have nothing else, and council has no other questions, thank you very much for your time.
Everybody's back to work and healthy?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we did have, thank goodness they decided to stagger them, which was nice, now, we did have one individual that tested positive, and everybody that was associated with her was put into isolation, and then we had another individual, thank goodness it was two weeks later, that tested positive, but he had been in touch with the Police Dog Services, and that's, they had tested positive, so then, he tested positive, but he was asymptomatic, but again, everybody that was associated with him was put into isolation, and everybody's back at work now, so, it's good.
Glad to hear. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on to our decision items, 6.1, Proposed Repealing Bylaw 2020-13-C to repeal the Drayton Valley Brazzo Recreation Board Bylaw 2020-1-C and Drayton Valley Recreation Board Amending Bylaw 2020-5-C, presented for first, second, and third reading. Ms. Treason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good morning, council. Following an interim ad hoc committee to take a look at recreation and recreation promotions and advancements in the past, on January 15th of this year, Administration presented the Drayton Valley Brazzo Recreation Board Bylaw for the readings, those readings went through first, second, and third reading, with final reading given on that same day. At the same time, council also approved Councilor Peebles and Councilor Ballas to that Recreation Board. And just further to that, after a discussion at the organizational meeting that took place on October 28th of 2020, council direct Administration bring forward a repealing bylaw to repeal bylaws 2020-01-C and 2020-05-C. So, the potential motions are listed for council, as indicated on the request for decision, and is being presented to council for its consideration.
All right, thank you very much, any questions for Administration?
Councilor McGee? I have a question. I looked at this, and I thought to myself, we're going through a fairly, you know, it takes a bit of time, somebody has to write some stuff, and then we write this, and then we write that, and then we put a bylaw in place, and then we say, well, we really don't want the bylaw, because it doesn't seem to work, and then I think to myself, well, it seems that we may be a little bit premature, I don't know if we're going to develop a better relationship with the county, but it's, it seems to me if this sat on the books, and we said, listen, is there any interest in coming back to the table? And the interest is, and this is my question, is, have you had any conversations about the repeal of this bylaw with the county, and I'm thinking of your, your counterparts, and to see whether they have, and I think they'll have absolutely no issue with it, the issue will be, is in three months' time, when we decide that we do need a little group of people to sit down and talk about recreation, that we'll have to do this again, so, have you had any conversations with the county?
Councilor McGee, I've had no discussions with, with the counterparts from Brazzo County regarding this.
Councilor Ballas?
Thank you, appreciate your comments. I, I think that this particular bylaw should be repealed, and if a new committee is to be structured, I think we need to look at structuring it in perhaps a little different manner, perhaps with more members from each side being on there, instead of just having two people who are negative to recreation on one board, two people who are excited about trying to get something moving forward. I think the board would, if we want to look at a board again, I think it has to be restructured, so that we can accomplish more than what we have done in the past.
Any other questions for Administration? Councilor Peebles? Thank you. Ms. Treason, what, what are your thoughts on this? I know there's a lot of work put into it, there's just some decisions made by the county, so, we're saying, well, if we're not meeting together, maybe you don't have the right to access everything that you're thinking you should, so how would you like to see us move on this?
Thank you, Councilor Peebles, with respect to the bylaw itself, Councilor McGee is correct in the sense that if we do have Brazzo County come back to the table, something will have to be redone, perhaps it's a change in the membership in terms of how we approach that. I know that in terms of the language that is currently being used, I know that Brazzo County is sitting there saying that they do indeed care about recreation, I'm thinking that this is a potential opportunity for Brazzo County to direct concern about the town's interest in recreation. I know that that's not the case, I know that this has to do with the composition, I know this has to do with the effectiveness of the bylaw, so, how we approach that, and how we deal with that, is the bigger discussion. So, there are certainly interests, and there's certainly a political statement with respect to repealing bylaw, I leave that up to council to determine when that time would be.
Councilor Gomana?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Treason, I'm, I'm thinking along the lines of Councilor McGee as well, you know, what we would like to see is that, you know, come three months or four months, hopefully, county will come back to the table to have discussions, and at that point, we would need a vessel for us to do that, so, whether the composition is correct or not, I think we can determine at that point with the change, or amendment to the, the bylaw at that point, but right now, we don't know what would be the outcome, which will come within next few months here, and then the, about the political statement, I think the best statement is that, to show that we are going to keep this, we are open for discussion, please come back to the table, this is about the whole region, not about this municipality or the other municipality, in my mind.
Councilor Ballas?
We've had it open for discussion, and we've seen what it got us, a $600,000 hit. I believe a message got to be sent. I'm tired of us always being the good guys, and we are the good guys, but we keep always giving in to what they want, what they want, and I don't accept that, I appreciate the fact that we've got to work together, but we've got to work with a common goal, and if there's no common goal, then there's no committee, there's no progress, and until we get some kind of understanding that we're on the same page, I find any committee is fruitless.
So, my question for Administration, just, I don't know where this vote's going to go, if for some reason council voted in favor of keeping this committee, do we need to appoint someone to it, or can we have it sitting there vacant at this time? Because we, as you know, we didn't appoint anyone to this committee, so I don't know what the, if we're...
I, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that you can remain, keep it vacant, that there's nothing, I believe, in the MGA that would restrict you from having to put somebody, or that would entitle you to, that you have to, so, it would just remain vacant.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of was my understanding. Councilor Dodds?
Good morning, Ms. Ballas, thank you. Um, I was just kind of reaching for it, but he was saying that I...
With respect to the administrative work behind repealing and instituting a new bylaw, I don't think that it matters that much to the Administration, whether we repeal and do another bylaw versus an amendment. In answer to Councilor Dodds' question, making an amendment to the bylaw would be the same as making sure that we approach Brazzo County, because it is a unilateral bylaw, so if we're looking at adding members, whether that's additional councillors, or whether that's members of the public, it would mean that Brazzo County has to find that acceptable in their bylaw as well. Any other amendments would again have to be arranged between Brazzo County and the town of Drayton Valley as well.
Councilor Gomana?
Ms. Treason, just from my understanding, has the county repealed their bylaw, or have they appointed anyone, or it's just sitting there?
Brazzo County Councilor Gomana had, they, has not repealed the bylaw, and they have indeed appointed two members of council to the Recreation Board.
Thank you.
Councilor McGee?
Mr. Mayor, I think right now, and I'll try this on, is that I'd make a motion that we, we table this, and let's table it for, until we can really get a good handle on, on where we might end up in the next two or three months.
All right, so Councilor McGee has made a tabling motion, so there's no discussion from now, we now have to vote on it.[1542.12][1542.12][laughter] All right, so, does everyone have a clear idea, or do you want me to just keep talking for five more seconds to...[1555.12][1555.12][laughter] So, the table, the motion has been made to table this decision item, which is repealing the bylaws, all in favor of tabling it?
In favor.
Okay, all opposed? That motion is carried, it has been tabled. 6.2, we have subdivision application DV 2002, maybe I'll just read that again, subdivision application, ooh, so, for 4114 and 4102, 62nd Street, lots 2 and 3, Plan 98229...
would entitle you to, that you have to, so it would just remain vacant.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of was my understanding. Councillor Dodds?
Good morning, Ms. Mayor. Thank you. Um, I was just kind of reaching for it for the thing that I...
Thank you, councillor Dodds. With respect to the administrative work behind repealing and instituting a new bylaw, I don't think that it matters that much to the administration, whether we repeal and do another bylaw versus an amendment. In answer to councillor Dodds' question, making an amendment to the bylaw would be the same as making sure that we approach Brazzo County because it is a unilateral bylaw. So, if we're looking at adding members, whether that's additional councillors or whether that's members of the public, it would mean that Brazzo County has to find that acceptable in their bylaw as well. Any other amendments would again have to be arranged between Brazzo County and the town of Drayton Valley as well.
Councillor Gomana?
Ms. Resin, just from my understanding, has the county repealed their bylaw? Have they appointed anyone, or it's just sitting there?
Brazzo County councillor Gomana had, they, has not repealed the bylaw, and they have indeed appointed two members of council to the recreation board.
Thank you.
Councillor McGee?
Mr. Mayor, I think right now, and I'll try this on, is that I'd make a motion that we, we table this. And let's table it for, until we can really get a good handle on, on where we might end up in the next two or three months.
All right. So councillor McGee has made a tabling motion, so there's no discussion from now. We now have to vote on it. All right, so, does everyone have a clear idea, or do you want me to just keep talking for five more seconds to... So, the table, the motion has been made to table this decision item, which is repealing the bylaws, all in favor of tabling it?
In favor.
Okay, all opposed. That motion is carried. It has been tabled. 6.2, we have subdivision application DV 2002. Maybe I'll just read that again. Subdivision application? So, for 4114 and 4102, 62nd Street, lots 2 and 3, Plan 982-2982, with our senior planner, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor Burks, and members of council. I'll take 40 of this, a few pictures on the agenda that I'd like to refer to. I'm not going to use a phone.
All right.
Just want to look at the diagrams. So...
There you are. I think Sabina's just moving it for you, so...
Um, so, I know, just sit back down.
Okay, so sorry for the delay. It's, this application's a pretty simple application. It's just a, really a lot addition application. The property is located on 62nd Street in the Brazzo Industrial Park that used to be in the county, hence the name Brazzo Industrial Park. So, what's happening here is, if, Sabine, you can go to page 29 on the agenda. So, the area that is labeled proposed lot, that is currently used by the lot to the north there, and, or, sorry, the area labeled proposed lot is part of the lot, Lot 2, but it's used by Lot 3. So, the lot is currently up for sale, sale or lease, and they're just changing the lot lines around to reflect the area of the lot that's used appropriately. So, a good representation of what is going on here is actually shown in photo number 3 on page 28. I could laser point it, but now the thing's not working, but there is, there are survey stakes showing in the picture if you look very closely. So, everything to the right of the survey stakes is, oh, thank you, what's... So, the survey, the survey stakes are about right here, or, sorry, actually, right here. So, everything from this point over is the part that is going to this line, and everything from this point over is already part of this lot. So, yes, that's, that's pretty much what's going on. And the retained lot, or the lot that would be left over, complies with the land use bylaw, the municipal development plan, the Brazzo Industrial Park ASP, and of course, the benefiting lot already exceeds the requirements and would exceed the requirements even further, so we recommend that this application be approved with conditions. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for administration? Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you. Is there a fence already between the two properties? Or just in the, like, you can see there's one a little bit in the front, but is there one actually?
Thank you, councillor Wheeler. Correct, there is already a fence between the two properties, and the fence reflects the resultant lot. So, it's basically the boundary, the lot boundary would just reflect what's really going on today.
Okay. Councillor Gomana?
Thank you. So, just from my understanding, so there's two properties, they're trying to change the border and, and sell one portion to, you know, reflect the usage, and then the other portion will stay the same.
Councillor Gomana, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor McGee?
To, further to that, do we know if, so I have this piece of property, I just want to make it into a couple of different lots, I could be just setting myself up for, further down the road, if I, if I ever want to sell them, I have the ability to do that. We don't know that there's something new coming in or anything like that. Is that correct?
Councillor McGee, I believe, yes, that's correct.
The second question, Mr. Ellis, is we are going through a refreshing of our bylaw. Does this, would this affect or change anything in a year from now? Would we, we see this differently, or would you be presenting differently?
Councillor McGee, the proposed lot, it exceeds what is going to be the lot size requirements of the new land use bylaw that is proposed and was given first reading at the last council meeting. I don't see any other further changes after this, if this application's approved.
And the reason I ask the question, Mr. Ellis, is that this seems like a fairly, if we were in a really building process and we had a bunch of things in front of us, this might be one where you would go, yeah, yeah, carry on, I'll make the decision. But you're saying that it exceeds the lot size, so you would still have to bring it back to council. Is that, that what you've just said?
Councillor McGee, we would not need to bring it back to council after, if this, if this application's approved, then we would not need to bring it back to council.
No, what I'm thinking, I'm thinking is that this is exciting for us because it's the first one in a long time. But anyway, if, if though, if the new bylaw is in place and we were really, really busy at all of this business, this seems like a fairly straightforward subdivision approval that may be made directly by our planners without bringing it to council.
I'm sorry, yes, I, I understand your question now, councillor McGee. So, right now, it is required to go to council, but we would, we would like to propose, and it's currently in the works, and I can't really, I can't really decide on something that we're going to do later, but, but we would like to possibly implement a policy for simple subdivisions, something like this, or a separation of title, where like, if someone built a duplex, then it's just a subdivision to separate each of the units, so that each unit has its own lot. A policy like that where we would not need to bring it to council, we can just approve it in-house, but unfortunately, right now, that's not the case.
There's three people here. Thank you. There's no other questions on this? Is there a councillor that would like to make a motion? Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council approve proposed subdivision DV 2002, subject to the conditions noted below, that the developer is to engage an Alberta land surveyor to prepare a plan of subdivision in accordance with the town's block numbering system for registration at the Alberta land titles office, subject to the attached subdivision plan, and that the applicant submit an endorsement fee of $200 to the town of Drayton Valley at the time the plan is submitted for endorsement.
All right. So, the motion is to approve the subdivision. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried. And I'm just going to call a five-minute break right now. Are you still there, Nancy? All right. We will reconvene here. Sorry for that quick delay. So, we're on to our decision item 6.3, approval of revised 2021 council meeting schedule. Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, what you have before you, we've previously approved the 2021 schedule for council meetings and other associated ones. The reason this is back to you is because we elected, or council elected, to not go ahead with the economic development committee, and that that would be rolled in to all future GMPs. So, as a result of that omission, we brought together or back for you the 2021 council meeting schedule for your consideration and adoption, please.
Okay. Any questions for administration? Is there a councillor that would like to make a motion? Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council approve the revised 2021 meeting schedule for council slash committee meetings as presented.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions, or debate? It's fairly straightforward. All in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Nancy. 6.4, appointment of returning officer.
That's me again.
Ms. Fancy.
I will speak at the start of, if there's any questions you could ask Ms. Fancy. So, basically, this is to request in terms of the Local Authorities' Election Act, we need to appoint a returning officer for the 2021 elections. And so, the appointment of the returning officer is by way of resolution that will allow council to have transparency to the community of Drayton Valley. Our next election, of course, is 18th of October 2021, and nominations will then, for the election, will be between January the 1st, 2021, and September 20th. So, for that reason, we need to appoint a returning officer, and we have suggested that Ms. Fancy act as our returning officer, and so there's four potential motions in this regard for council's consideration.
Okay. Any questions for administration, or Ms. Fancy?
Do you really want this? Yes.
She's experienced.
Yes.
Is there a councillor that would like to make a motion?
Oh, councillor Peebles. This is an invigorating meeting. I move that council appoint Jennifer Fancy as a returning officer for 2021 municipal general election, and I appreciate your willingness to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? Seeing none, ask the question. All in favor?
In favor.
That is carried. We now move to our last decision item, 6.5, which is a closed session. Is there a councillor that would like to make a motion to move us into closed under section 24-1BI? So, councillor Wheeler makes that motion that we move into closed for decision item 6.5 at 9:40, oh, 9:50. 9:50 AM, under section 24-1BI. All in favor?
In favor.
That is carried. Thank you.
How many other people are on?